Where's the member of the Board on this?
Hello, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Good, good, thanks.
So just wrapping up. Board of Trustees.
Oh, no, you got back to back, holy smokes.
Yeah.
Well, better than having fun, I guess, right?
Who wants to do anything like go home?
Exactly. Aye, aye, aye. Thanks for sticking around.
No problem. Right, there's a bunch of people. There are people waiting. I don't see any other board members. Well, Jay, it might be Sue. Okay, now Sue is in. This might be Lara by phone. Matt, it says HGRB because everybody shares the same link on that account.
I don't even see that, where does it say that?
Oh, so I just got a text from you saying some other says.
From somebody else?
Do you hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, yep.
Oh, no, it was from wrong Matt, from Matt Moran.
He doesn't want to do, he doesn't want to meet with the HGRB. Edit that out, please.
Are you raining, Matt, are you raining at your place?
No, no, it's just kind of gloomy, gloomy for a couple of days.
Okay, this is, sky is so dark here.
Is that right? Yeah, no, it's just been windy and gloomy. The two days before that were absolutely glorious fall days.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's still warm, so I'm not complaining. It's the Adurandex at 70 degrees, so that's a that's doing well in late, you know, late September.
No, no complaints.
Exactly.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I found it in the agenda after I, I knew I saw it somewhere. I said I could not delete it. I, I'm not.
Yeah, and then when you go to, and when you open the agenda, you can just click on the link.
Yeah.
Right in the agenda.
I knew I saw it somewhere.
Yeah, we're back to that, which I think is good. I think that, you know, I think that, you know, there's just having trouble logging on.
Yeah, okay. I think we, you know, shut off the, the Zoom thing too fast. It's, everybody was so relaxed and then it's.
Oh, my. Okay, we're all assembled. Thanks for getting us together, Jeff. The Village Clerk took call to order the September 23 meeting of the Village of Cold Spring Planning Board. We are back on Zoom, per chapter 417 of the New York State laws of 2021. The new governor has allowed us to start doing this again, which we're thankful for. Chair's remarks, those are my remarks. Approval of minutes, we've got a couple sets of minutes to go through. I think the first one we couldn't do because we didn't have a quorum. We have the 7:22 minutes. I'll share those now. And so it's just, it's myself, Sue and Lara.
Yes.
Because Stephanie was not at that meeting. The first meeting, Planning Board in person, and here we are back to Zoom. Since the start of the kind of the sports legislation, I mean, see a meeting launch, a video conferencing, how prophetic. The events of the past 18 months have demonstrated that Congress has forced increased participation. Okay, funny, here we are again. Okay, we had 40 Main Street. We had Tim Rassik, who is here with us again tonight, Architect representing the applicant of 40 Main. Overview that, a tech company has committed to the office space for up to 29 employees. As a point of the way the office space can accommodate 29 people, the company does not anticipate that all of the 20 employees will be at the office. It knows the company is a plan classroom, maintaining storefronts, so they responded separately. Especially since we've got a parking, where it says to go and search the app and to repair parking table for the next meeting. It was just the parking table will be broken out for individual retail and office spaces, change in use. And Francis, just the applicant meet with the Village Board of Trustees to address required parking waivers. Estimated at 43 spaces. I'm just gonna, I would just suggest an owner just that when I said the applicant, I said specific, you know, I said specifically the, the principal owner. But that Jeff is correct, it's the applicant. I just wanted to be clear here, that's not the applicant's representative. Is everybody okay with that change?
Yes.
Okay, just that the owner would go talk to the Village Board, because as I said, you know, we've never seen an impact, you know, parking waiver with, you know, requiring, I think, any more than maybe 10 of these things. So obviously, I think the, the best thing to do in case it would require some sort of legislative action or some sort of plan would be to speak to the Village Board. Since they are the executive and legislative body. Another workshop should be held for the public parking change of use. Lara made a motion to adjourn. I seconded the motion. With that change, does any other members, Lara or Sue, have comments? For the minutes?
No, I think it's, I think it's fine for me if, looking at it, I think Laura made the, or Jeff made the comments that one point they should bring up is the weekend parking is not needed for this office. I think that's one of the points that we will.
Good point, yeah, so those part of trustees.
Do we know that to be true?
This, this, their, their large numbers of parking is for people working in the office during the week, but they only got the, the two windows for the retail, as far as I understood from that meeting.
Right, I guess my, do we know that it's true that people will not be working, will not be coming?
Well, let's, yeah, let's make sure that we, that we address minutes, what was said is minutes.
Oh, sorry guys, I'm gonna go unmute.
No, 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 not at all. Just that, that's, that's true, you know, we don't know that, we don't know what their work schedule is, but Jeff did say, you know, kind of in a shared parking, you know, scenario is, are, you know, these are kind of, that it was likely that this would be weekday and not the, you know, and not the heavy period of weekend parking, right? Which I think is certainly, that is certainly what he said, Jeff, is that, is that good?
Yes.
Yeah, and so it's kind of like, kind of speaks to smart parking and saying, well, you know, if there's a, you know, there's a nightclub at one end and a grocery store at the other, you know, or your retail at the other, you know, it closes and then the nightclub doesn't open until, it doesn't get busy till nine or 10 o'clock at night anyway, and so could you share the parking? Stephanie's point is well taken, but with respect to the minutes, I don't think that was discussed, but yes, that, you know, we don't know what their work schedule is. And the reality of it is, is as we all know, in our, you know, in our, in our day jobs, we work as required, which sometimes includes weekends, right? Okay, but that's a good point, Sue. With that change, do you have a motion to approve the minutes? I'm sorry, the, the July 22 meeting minutes? Great, Lara, you want a second? Lara, do you have audio? Oh dear.
Can you hear me now?
Yep, I can hear you now.
All right, seconded?
Okay, great, all in favor? I vote aye.
Aye.
Great, all right, very good. Yep, gotcha. Okay, great, so the minutes are, are adopted for the July 22 meeting as amended. You can all see me do my filing, so then we're done. So I don't have to go back to this. Okay, we're done with that one. Now for another one. And then this, I think, is one where I was not there. The unusual occurrence, this might be the only meeting I've missed. Okay, so we have the 8:26 minutes. As you can see, I wasn't there, so it's the three of you, but I'll certainly act as secretary. The Architect representing the applicant, seconded approval of change of use, retail to retail office and a parking variance waiver. Presented the resides parking table, breaking out retail from the office. Sue Myers made a motion to hold a public hearing September 23rd, seconded by Lara Eldon. And it passed a vote of 3, 0, 0, and 1 absent. Stepping out, so the applicant, they will need to complete SECR and send out. I would suggest you put in the short form SECR, is that correct?
Yes.
I'm guessing that's what you, that's what was discussed.
And, and also, we, we referred, we've heard Tim Rassik to the forms available on the website.
Okay. Is that good for? Is that good for the 40 Main Street application?
Oh, and I think up above, I, Tim Rassik presented a revised parking table, breaking out retail from office space, and I and I just wanted to add, when asked by S. Hawkins, Tim Rassik confirmed that the applicant had spoken to the Village Board about the applicant's application. That's all I have. No, no apostrophe S is neither.
Okay, so new business, 15 Main Street, G. Hartford Architect, Property, Lord Bergman, Applications for a Men's Site Plan. Previously approved May 2009, where site plan that include covered porch or okay, that's not, it did include the ADA ramp, oh, on the village property, well, that's certainly true, and why would it? Applicant is proposing a modification to the approved ADA ramp during the ensuing discussion, the applicant announced that they not, that they knowingly built the ramp on village property under the assumption that because it was for an ADA ramp, the village would sell the property. This is a very important statement for the three of you, is that, you know, and be very careful, is this, is this exactly what was said? It's also recorded too, and you know, and nobody's.
I think, yeah, that they, yeah, they were aware that they built the ramp onto property and it was assumed that because it was for the ADA ramp, the village would sell the property.
Even though, I mean, I wish, I mean, I wasn't there, I just want to be clear from my own understanding, it was made clear to them two years prior that the village would not sell the property. And the reason the village, just so the board is aware, so typically what happens, like, we're all familiar with the Silver Spoon, right, or the, or the hotel, right, where we want them to, to buy the stoop, you know, to make the, to make the property accessible, right, because this is a commercial property. We, while it's not in our code, we are certainly understanding of, you know, federal ADA laws and supportive of the fact that if you're gonna do a major renovation to a, you know, to a commercial building, offering, again, offering services to the, you know, to, you know, to the public, you need to make it accessible, right? And unless there is some incredible hardship, there was not in that case, but typically what has happened, you know, like with the hotel, as well as, you know, some Main Street folks that have bought their front stoop and all of that, it's property that's already developed. It, this, this was was new in that it was vacant property, right, it was undeveloped property. And the, and this is my interpretation of the Village Board's decision. I don't, I don't know exactly what their thinking was, I wasn't at the meeting, but in my, what I see, what I can certainly speak to is the effect of what the Village Board did, which is to limit non-conformance, right? See, if the Village Board were to, were to sell them the full, you know, the full porch, the full apron, right, in front of the building, and with the applicant's intention that they were going to fill it edge to edge, which is what they told the Village Board, the Village Board would then be selling land to increase non-conformity, right, for a property that is already way out of conformance on lot coverage. So back in 2019, they said, well, what is, why do you need this? She said she wanted the porch, and they're like, we're not going to help you increase non-conformity, that, I'm, that I was there for. What I think their decision to sell the stoop was, well, we're going to raise the grade, so an on-grade door, which can be accessed from your property, now can't be accessed from your property unless you jump up two feet or whatever, 34 inches. So the Village Board accommodated that and said, okay, we will, we'll sell you enough land for the stoop, right? Just so you can access your property because you're doing this flood bathtub, right? Now, it's important to remember, though, that there was no need for the ADA ramp, because as it was presented to us and as what was approved in May of 2019, the applicant's representative, who was a licensed architect, said, I can build this ramp and provide access under the carport, right, so there was no need for that. When she came and met with you, it sounds like kind of the it, it sounds like, you know, the, the truth of the matter came out, where she said, well, I always assumed we were going to get that land, and therefore she needed the extra six feet to come, to create a ramp that was ADA compliant with respect to, with respect to the incline of the ramp. Is that all accurate?
Just to be accurate, just, just for accuracy, I think, the way I remember is that, I think initially it was like, you know, there was, there was the assumption that the ramp would fit within the means of the property plan as they showed it to us, or the plan as they presented it and as it was approved. But that, then there was an acknowledgement that that was a mistake that was made with the office. But then I think that, that's separate from the fact that, you know, then, when they realize that does happen, you know, as an architect, like, I, like, you're working with a level of abstraction at a certain point, so I just, just to be fair, like, sometimes mistakes happen with inches, you know, it was a six inch with grading especially, it's tricky, but, but then I think the decision to, so, so I think there was, I just want to be clear, I think there was an initial acknowledgement that we made a mistake in that assumption, that's why, or, or at least when discussed, when Stephanie was Acting Chair was sort of in it was acknowledged that, yes, this was date, there was an assumption, and it wasn't brought to our attention until later, but then in the, in the process of.
I'm sorry, let me stop you there, what, 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 I'm sorry, let me stop you there, what was the assumption?
The assumption, I think what I remember hearing was that the assumption was that the rampant, the, the ramp at the slope would, could fit within the bounds as was shown on the plan, which was within the property line, which did not require you know, incur, incursion onto the village property. However, when it was realized during the construction process, which happens often, that, you know, that was a requirement, it was the responsibility to bring it before the planning board, again, before building it, of course. And I think that is the nuance of it, is like, yes, the mistake, yes, acknowledgement that the mistake was made, but then also the secondary, but, and then that is an accept, sometimes there is that level of detailed, I, I don't mean to, it's not about, it's just sort of about understanding that sometimes with grading especially, and especially with these complex you know, slopes and stuff have a little bit of a mistake at that point, but then building it out was a, was a second mistake, and I think that's where it was made, and another made that that, that, you know, the village would sell, I think what was presented was that the village, they, they made a second assumption, which they also acknowledged was a mistake, that the village would sell that property because they had done it before for a separate project, which again was not, you know, it, it didn't follow the protocols, and I think that's what we're here to address, is that now we need to follow the protocols, right? Does that, does that align with what you, what Stephanie and Sue remember?
Can I add just a, a one more detail of, I agree with what Lara said, but also during that meeting, the first plan that they did not need any further into the public property was that there was supposed to be some construction or something done to a pipe or something under the brick path, and that would raise that whole area for about six inches, therefore, the, the, the planned ramp will meet that without any problems. However, that construction of pipes or something, that that place was not touched, so the original plan of the six inches, depending on that move or that project did not fall into place. I think that's one of the details in there that I remember, but it, it was the first one was a, you know, calculation, but the second one was the assumption that the village may agree to sell them or lend to them that piece of property because of its ADA requirement, and that was the, the mistake, I think that was recognized by Juhi during that meeting. That's part of the thing I remember.
Stephanie, as you chaired the meeting, I mean, I'm not quite sure.
I would, yeah, I, I would, I mean, if we're going to, if we're going to elaborate on the second paragraph here regarding, you know, during the ensuing.
Do you actually, do you, do you have a copy of the minutes, right, Stephanie?
I do, I have it in front of me.
Yeah, why don't you, you want to, let me stop the share and let you share them, and then if you could just kind of, since I wasn't at the meeting.
Yeah, yeah, sure. All right, okay. So my, the things that I see are missing from the new business items are that the original site plan did not include covered porch, exterior seating, or the ADA ramp on village property. And now, if, if this second paragraph here is something that we're going to elaborate on, and, and we're going to talk about and we're going to talk about and, and discuss the original plant, the original site plan. What I recall is that the original, that Juhi said that the original site plan was, did not reflect an ADA compliant ramp be, be as drawn and stamped on that site plan because the architects assumed that the village property in front of Laura Bergman's property would be disrupted and was going to be able to be raised up and lifted up, as Sue pointed out, to change the elevation of that front apron, so it would so that that would make up the difference that did not exist on Laura Bergman's property.
And, yeah, she mentioned a six inch difference that she, they thought would get graded out or something, that was what I remember was said.
It's important to follow the timeline here, is that that solution to, to grade the village brick up to meet the existing ramp was just identified the day before. It could not have been included as a solution in a plan dated two years prior. It could not have been. Right?
Oh, I mean, I don't know, because I, I do, again, just as someone who's worked in this industry, like, sometimes, and again, I don't know who was, you know, just, just to give, just to give what I heard, the reflect, like, what we heard together reflection in the minutes was that what we heard was, there was a six inch discrepancy between the ramp as shown on the plan and the sidewalk, and we thought that that would get, because we thought that we would be bringing utilities in, this is what I remember here, because we thought that we would be bringing utilities in, we thought those six inches could be resolved with great, you know, when, when, when the regrading happens, that could just be massaged now. You know, whether that's a proper assumption or not, is, you know, that's what I heard, that's what I remember hearing, was presented as the, as the initial reason that the plan was presented as fitting within the property line. It was like, oh, yeah, we can, we can squeeze, we can nudge this in because we're bringing utilities in, it's going to get torn up, and we can make up the difference. That's what I remember, so I'm just being very clear.
By regrading the six feet of the village property to make
Right.
To make it meet an elevated ramp that kind of dropped off.
Yeah, or saying that, like, it's going to be re-bricked anyways, and, you know, the bricks, the cobbles are, are what they are, so we are gonna we're gonna just sort of massage that grade difference at the end. We think we can make up the accuracy. We think that, what I heard was that we thought at that point that that could be, or someone in the office thought, that's what I heard, was that someone in the office thought that that could be solved, resolved. And it wasn't necessarily specific, so, but, but I'm, but then, then I think then, so that was what I heard was the first reason why the plan was the way it was, as fitting, and again, yeah, I just, I can see that happening, but I, I just, you know, and then the second decision was a separate thing, but that's later in the minutes.
I mean, and not for the minutes, but it's important for the board to understand that 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 same solution or, or a variation of that solution, which was that the village regrade or that the, or that the applicant and the applicant's rep, you know, caused work to be performed to regrade the six feet of the village property to then.
Inches, sorry, just wanna, I always do that, Matt.
Well, it's, no, 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 it's a six foot, no, it's a six foot run.
I thought it was a six inch difference.
It's a six inch difference in elevation.
Across.
It's a six inch difference in elevation.
Yes.
The drop, the, the, the ramp doesn't meet the grade, the ramp is six inches above the grade at the property lot. Those six inches, because it's an inch per foot run, right, because it's, that's what a ramp is.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Brings, brings her out six feet onto village property.
Right, 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 I understand what you're saying, sorry, I misunderstood.
So yeah, you know, just for your own edification, as opposed to, you know, with respect to, you know, understanding is that that solution was presented by Juhi two days prior to meeting with you as a new solution. Something that they had just come up with, and I sent that to you guys, where they showed strings and they showed the elevation of how they could bring the stone, right, they could bring the ramp up. Look, it's entirely possible that they thought of it two years ago and then forgot about it, and then thought of it as the same solution two years later. I just I'd just like to be clear that I, that, that, you know, that, that we pay attention, and that, you know, and it, it's, 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 it seems, you know, it seems strange, but regardless, it's not for the minutes, it's really for our own app, you know, our own understanding. So you guys, just as, you know, you guys were at the meeting, just make sure that the three of you agree on, you know, because there's a, there's a very big difference between what Stephanie is saying and what Lara is saying. What Stephanie is saying is that the, the ramp that was shown was knowingly. What Stephanie is saying is that the, the ramp that was shown was knowingly shown that couldn't be built, right? Whereas.
And, and that's true, and that, and Juhi did, did acknowledge that what was, what was rendered on the site plan within the applicant's property was not ADA compliant because, because her firm had made the, had prepared that plan assuming that the property in front of the applicant's property, that the village property, I should say, in front of the applicant's property would be regraded during construction. Juhi didn't describe that as, as regrading that was, that was only recently thought of. It was described to us as, you know, that, as something that was known to be happening and that, that there was an assumption that the, the brick would be higher ultimately for construction.
I, I gotta tell you, and I'm not going to beat a dead horse, just one more time. It's just that, you know, if you raise the edge of a, of a, of an apron six inches, then you have a trip hazard of six inches on both sides to the east and the west. So it all just, it's a bit half baked, but that's fine. Things happen and obviously that make, just, just go ahead and just, you know, make sure that you guys are all comfortable with the minutes and we can move on.
Okay, so the first statement, you know, I think we, we agree that we want to, we want to elaborate on this. So this first sentence, I'm just going to drop just for discussion purposes here. This is what I've added based on Lara and Sue, your contributions here. Would you read that and let me know if that's what. Larry, you're on mute.
The original site plan, that, that's, I think that, that's a, a correct uh, uh, statement.
Lara? You're on mute. Oh, okay. And you're giving, okay, got it. Okay, all right. And second, I, I therefore, based on your contributions, I've, I've added to the second sentence here saying that the applicant acknowledged that once they did identify the shortfall in elevation in front of the applicant's property, they knowingly built the ramp on village property, assuming that because it was for an ADA ramp, the village would sell the property to the applicant.
Uh, well, I think it's probably would sell or maybe lease to them, well, you know, I, I, the, for the, for the selling bit, I think Juhi said the village, they, they assumed the village would sell it to them because when River Architect was building their office, they started building it before the village actually finished the, the, the selling of that piece of property for the, for the front step. So she assumed this would be the same. However, my point at that time to her was that their office already got the permission from the village, not the permission, already got the agreement from the village that the village would sell them that piece of property. So they started without or before they actually got the owner. However, however, she would assume for Main Street number fifteen, it, it could happen in the same way. But I told Juhi, the, the two cases are different. So her assumption of saying the River Architect Office and Fifteen Main was the same, it was not the correct assumption because you cannot just build something without knowing even you can get it. That's, that was my point to her, but I think she got it, but she, she just said the village was very nice to them before. So therefore the village could be nice again. I, I think that's her assumption.
And it was a process, it was a process. You know, it was like, we have to, you know, it was, it was a rushing into something not, not acknowledging the process that was required.
So.
All right, before, I'll let you guys continue, but just for, not for these minutes, but for the minutes of this meeting, does anybody on the board recall any discussion with the board at the time back in, you know, back when we were approving this, that there was any discussion about the village property being regraded to meet this ramp or to do anything on the village property?
No.
No, not, 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 not two years ago during that meeting.
Right. Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Stephanie.
Okay, I'm just typing. The silence you hear is me typing. I'm just, I'm just finishing up here, the, the qualification here that, and then that Sue reminded the applicant that those were different circumstances. Are we good on those, those paragraphs there? And then down here, planning board explored available options with the applicant, including move ramp back six feet into the entrance, into the entrance of the of the residential unit, right?
Yeah.
And and this would remove the ramp from village owned property, but Juhi stated that this option, I expanded on being too financially burdensome to say, you know, what the issue was, that it would irrevocably compromise that flood mitigation solution. She was talking about that mesh that went into, it was integrated into the building that was built. And that by doing that, that would, you know, create issues that would be too financially burdensome for the applicant.
I think the financial burdensome was not too much there. Basically, she said it would compromise the whole flood, flooding tub. And because it's so much rebars and so on.
That's right, that's right. It wasn't about finance.
It was not financial thing. It's basically the structure.
But it's the, but they're one and the same. I mean, to try and do it would be pretty costly to, to restore, to restore the integrity of the membrane for the bathtub.
Yeah.
That's right. Okay, so we, we will add this. Okay. All right. All right, and then the second option was to install a, an electric chairlift. And Juhi said that other clients have tried this, but had removed them because they were aesthetically unappealing and they don't get used. And the third option that was discussed was to apply to New York State for a variance. And she stated, and I added this, that she, she responded saying that this option was too burdensome and would take too long.
May take too long. Wow.
Well, she was definitive that it would take too long. And uh, as Hawkins instructed Juhi, that the applicant needs to make a decision on the path forward, resolve the issue with the village and return to the planning board. And I just added here, with an updated site plan that reflects ADA compliant access, ADA compliant path of travel on the porch and within the interior of the space and an updated parking table.
Yes, that was, that was, so, yeah.
That sounds right.
Yeah.
Okay. All righty. Okay, great. And so that's it. Yep. Sue made a motion to adjourn. Lara seconded. And amazingly, the motion passed unanimously and we adjourned. All right, so with these edits, are these good to go?
I, I agree with that.
A mo, a motion to approve the minutes.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion, so.
Second.
Yay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. All right. All right, we've approved them. Great.
Great. And then Stephanie, if you could just shoot me those whenever a minute.
For sure. I'm going to stop sharing. Great, okay. Yep, I'll shoot them to you.
Okay, sorry about the, we had some waiting minutes there. Sorry about that. Reported members, do we have any reports from the members? Kind of correspondence, I'm not aware of any correspondence. So we'll move on to the public hearing. The, I'll just read the legal notice, just so everybody has that. Actually, let me share this up really quick. Village of Hold Spring will hold a public hearing today. Due to, so obviously we're allowed to do this with the chapter four seventeen of, of the New York State laws of twenty twenty one. The planning board considered the application by Forty Main Street CSLC for change of permitted use per chapter one thirty four dash nine of the Village Code, site plan approval for a change of permitted use from retail to retail office spaces required from the planning board in addition to a parking variance waiver as per chapter one thirty four eighteen. The planning board will consider all verbal and or written statements from all persons interested in the proposed variance and in pros various manners described above. The planning board will also consider such further relief as it finds necessary. Obviously, everything was in the village board, was in the village office and the clerk was able to present that to folks. So we can get started on that. The applicant's representative, Timothy Rastic, is here to present the application. So Tim, if you want to kind of show fucks, show the folks what you're proposing.
Sure. Let's see, I think I hopefully.
Do you want me to share?
Can I share my screen?
I believe you can, yeah.
Can you see it?
We, yes, we do now.
Terrific. Thank you very much. My name is Tim Rasic. I'm the architect for Forty Main Street. And what our client is proposing is it, this building was originally constructed as a garage, had several lives, was a garage. I think a, a car dealership and most recently an antique store. There are three window bays in the front and there are a glass storefront, an entry door, a garage door and another entry door and a glass storefront and then a large open space. Our client is proposing to change from retail to both retail and office use. The first bay here would be one retail space, which has a bathroom. The main entry for the office space would be through the middle bay. We're proposing to replace the garage door with a new garage door that has an inset ADA door, which actually sits inside the garage door. We gone through the review process with the historic review board and that was approved. And then this other space here would be another retail space. So there'd be two small retail spaces and the bulk of the space would be office. So it's primarily open space with a couple of conference rooms and then a secure room for valuables. And I can show you a furniture plan, which might make it a little more clear. This is just the construction plan. So this is a furniture plan. The entry would be here. This would be just a flexible meeting area up front. The desks would be aligned here. So there's clusters of desks here, clusters of desks here, the two conference rooms. This is an open pantry area cafe and we'll have some telephone booths. Since it's primarily an open area, when people need to make private calls, they can step in a telephone booth, which is essentially a furniture piece that will be put in the space. So there are seating for twenty nine people in the space. We did add a parking table to the plans to show the parking breakout for the different areas. And that per the code is based on a square footage. So for our, the first retail space, based on its square footage, would require three parking spaces. The next retail space would require four parking spaces. And then the office portion is larger, would require thirty seven spaces. So it's, it's based on a hundred and fifty square feet per, for each space. So actually, I'm, I'm sorry, so the number I mentioned before was forty three. It actually ended up being forty four spaces total that we're requesting a parking waiver for.
Okay. And you actually, you actually are correct with forty three because a Main Street business is grandfathered one space.
Okay, okay. Well, that, every little bit helps. Thank you.
It is a little bit, but I'm glad you feel that way.
So thank you. And, and I think the point that was brought up earlier is, I know parking is a concern in the village. And, you know, the office, I mean, people do work all hours, especially today. But I think that, you know, when we come to the office, the idea is that they would primarily be coming during the work week when the parking is not as much of an issue. It's really taxed on the weekends. So that the larger parking count would really be on, on, during the weekdays. And the goal of the owner is to help reinvigorate, you know, the Renaissance of Main Street and continue that and bring businesses there. And we hope that, you know, people that do come to work here will go eat and buy things in other stores along Main Street. So we want to bring life, more life to Main Street and, and that's really the intent. The, the two retail towns haven't been identified yet, so we don't know what those spaces will actually end up being in terms of what the retail use will be in each of those. So I, I think that's sort of our general overview.
Okay. We, unfortunately, there was a conflict of some sort. And so we weren't able to have legal counsel tonight. We would normally have legal counsel, the village attorney for, for a public hearing. So I just wanted to make sure that people were clear on that. So I'm not sure, we'll, we'll have to decide how far we can go tonight. Tim, my question, did the, did the owner ever meet with the village board to talk about the parking?
Thank you. So I, I believe the owner told me, I, I don't know if met with the board in its entirety. I believe he reached out to a board members to, to just broach the subject. So I, I don't know who he spoke with on the board, but it was relayed to me that there was a conversation and I, I don't know with who.
With, with a trustee?
Trustee, yes.
Okay.
Because we did take, we, we relayed that information that you suggested that, you know, they get in front of this with, with the village. We, we pass that information on.
So it wouldn't have been the mayor, it would have been one of the other trustees on the board?
So, yes.
Okay.
I don't know who.
Okay. All right. Now, fair enough, which one I, you know, I just want to stress that that's really, that's very important because, you know, as you know, as you read our code, the, the planning board, you know, it has discretion as to whether or not to recommend the waivers. And then the village board has the, has the discretion as to whether or not to issue the waivers. And we'll, you know, we'll kind of go through that. We'll probably need to, we will definitely need to confer with the village board after this meeting. So unless the board has any need for discussion right now, I think we should open it up to public comment to see if the public has some comment and then we could discuss after that comment, how to feel, people feel about that. Yeah, I think I'd like to hear the comment first as opposed to kind of color the comment.
Sounds good.
Okay. All right, great. So Jeff, if there's anybody that wants to speak in the public regarding this application for Forty Main Street?
I'm glad to see everybody with their hands up.
I have my.
Ochenko, I'm sorry, I didn't see.
I, I don't think you can see me, but I'm at forty eight fifty Main Street and I can say there are hardly forty three parking spaces except in the train parking lot. Around the whole block, there are only maybe ten in front of Forty Main Street. Period. I mean, they're just, unless they're double spaced.
That's, that's a good point. And for, for understanding, there are roughly ninety spaces on Main Street total from the, you know, from the, from the turnaround at the bottom to the parking lot up by the gas station. There are roughly ninety.
Yeah.
Total.
This is, this is really pretty shocking, forty three. That's all I, I need to say. I, I, they're nice neighbors. They've been working on this building for a long time. And that's good. And that's good, they cleaned it, they they, they power, power cleaned the building inside and out. But forty three parking is beyond what I can imagine for the whole village, it would take all the rest of the businesses' parking spaces all the way up to the firehouse. I just need to say that, but like, I mean, a lot of businesses that have been in business for, you know, Kisman has been there longer than I've been there even. That I just need to say that.
No, no, we appreciate that, that's that's the whole point of these of these meetings, obviously, to get the public's feedback, so thank you for your, thank you for your comment.
Yes.
Okay, next up is Ethan Kim.
Hi, Ethan Tim, also forty eight fifty Main Street, I just had a couple of questions for clarification. I'm, I know that the parking calc is done on a per square foot basis, so is there any, is this, I know, so this would be the number that comes up by doing that math. But is is that also the proposed number of occupants, at least for the, in this case? And then is that relevant? Is my first question, and then I guess, I don't know if I should wait for my second.
Let's do that, let's, so with respect to the parking table, yes, it's one per one fifty. Tim, the the applicant's representative can tell you that they're they have seating for twenty nine plus, you know, some common areas, so nobody knows if it, you know, on a day, if that place would be fully occupied or partially occupied, or or different flex schedules, but there are seating for twenty nine, but the way our code works is to is to take the square footage, and it's one parking space for every hundred and fifty square feet. But it doesn't, it would seem that they're, you know, at maximum capacity, which is everybody in their desk, as well as, you know, some sort of outside contact, as well as maybe a conference with outside, you know, with 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 customer facing contact, people coming in, it could be somewhere between twenty nine and forty three. Tim, is that a reasonable?
Yeah, I mean, I think it was, what's interesting, the way the code's written, it's a hundred and fifty square feet per space, I mean, we have a headcount of twenty nine per the code, it's calling for thirty seven spaces, so it, you know, the the code is calling for more spaces than are actually needed per the headcount. But yes, I mean, you could have a few more people in on a given day, but but I don't think they will, they they do a lot of stuff via video, so I don't think they have a lot of outside visitors, so it's it's really internal meetings. And that's what really the conference rooms are for, they're not for outside visitors, per se, they do a lot of Zoom meetings in the space. And that that's why they have the breakout telephone rooms and the conference rooms, so people can go into quiet areas and do that.
Quiet refuge, yeah. Okay, great, Tim, Ethan, do you want your second question, if that's sufficient?
Oh, thanks, well, I mean, again, it's hard to predict, but I was also just curious. Is there, because obviously, this, the the great thing is that it's located near the train, and there may be some ability for people to commute. I know I I had an employee who was commuting from, actually, from Marble Hill, so anyway, I didn't know if that was some, well, at least I would suggest that's also something to consider. I don't know if that's anything these employees do, but it is something. And then more more broadly, I just wanted to, so that's a question, is if that can be taken into account, in that it's theoretically transit oriented development, I guess. And then also, I know it's probably would be a challenge, but it also would be exciting to have more activity on Main Street in midweek, so that's that's a positive. So thanks, but yeah, my question is about, I guess, the possibility of commuting by train or carpooling, etc.
Let me take the, I'll take the first part, which is with the code, and unfortunately, the, what the planning board does is, you know, we we apply the code, and the code currently says, you know, one per one fifty, so we don't really have a mechanism to say, you know, these people are going to come by by train. We basically just have to follow the code that as exists on the books, but Tim can certainly speak to whether or not their ability, we had discussed this last time, including the the, you know, the the board was very positive about the the vibrancy on Main Street and the ability to have customers, you know, consistently throughout the week, which would, you know, this this could provide to businesses like restaurants and, you know, convenience stores and, you know, and the, you know, the coffee shop and but obviously, the the board is, you know, the board is here to apply the code, which is one per one fifty, I think Tim had said that most of the people were coming from Fishkill, or their prior office was in Fishkill. Go ahead, Tim.
Yes, I'm sorry, so the the prior office was in Fishkill, I mean, I think this location is desirable, because it does offer the the opportunity to take mass transit and do it, I I don't know what the the ratio where people live, but if people were living up north, let's say, Beacon, and coming down, that would be a natural to take the train and walk up, and it'd be a very nice walk, so I I think you know, as 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 people are attracted to work at this firm, those locations may be desirable, because you can take mass transit.
I I I have a quick question, because I know, I know, our purview is to apply the code with respect to the parking, but I think one of the things that we brought up as the planning board in earlier sessions with the applicant was whether there were any way to sort of for the community, just describe the ratio, I I don't think we can apply this in our approval of the parking table necessarily, but that it might help with a sort of unprecedented, unprecedented number of parking waivers requested to sort of describe some kind of incent, not incentivizing, but, you know, assumption that mass transit would be taken, and there would be some kind of encouragement of walking from an off Main Street parking location or biking. So I'm not sure if there was any consideration for that, I just wanted to bring that, that we did talk about that in relation to Ethan and Jane's questions, so.
That's a good point, and that's, and that's one of the main reasons why I suggested they, that the owner talked to the village board, because it would require a legislative action, or the village saying, you know, we could build a parking lot over here and lease it to you, something like for Hudson, like they did for Hudson House, right? You know, the, you know, that's that, I don't know if that's a reasonable, or if that's a viable option, but the only way to do that is to go talk to the village board, right, and to see where they are, because because there are chat, there are serious challenges here. We we can certainly say that the parking is 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 certainly much better during the week, but I would not say that we don't have a parking issue during the week. Right, it's just not as hor, the weekends are horrible, right, so we're not just saying that it's just kind of bad on the weekends, it is, it's, it is a, you know, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a real mess. So while everything is relative, and, you know, better than awful is is still better, but but again, we do, we, I want to be clear, at least for my own part, that I think this is, this, it's it's great to see people that believe in Main Street, and want to look at the vibrancy of Main Street, it's just that it would, in my mind, it requires that, you know, the the cooperation of the village board to help us figure this out.
And it can be prohibitive, you know, I think the lack of parking spots for even twenty nine people, if you're looking at that, that's one third of Matt, you said the number was ninety for the parking.
Well, here's.
Oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Oh, I'm just saying, that's still a big percentage of parking spots, right, on Main Street, so what will that create?
Well, and here's, and here's the real kicker, right, is that there's a four hour parking limit on Main Street. Right, so it doesn't even really accommodate, nor does it anticipate long term parking. Even the parking waivers anticipate short trip parking that is predominantly retail, that is a kind of a for lack of a better word, kind of a shared, you know, a shared, you know, a shared thing where they're, you know, they're going for lunch and picking up a card and going, you know, so it's, it's not just a one, it's not a one stop typical, you know, typically, they're having lunch, and they're doing a little bit of something else. So the challenge is for the planning board, I don't know, frankly, how we could send these cars to Main Street, not not solely based on the number, but because Main Street can't accommodate a workday parking. Right, and the waivers are for Main Street, for B one, the B one is only Main Street, we can't issue waivers with the understanding that then the people would end up on the side streets, because they couldn't comply with the parking restrictions on Main Street. That just occurred to me in the last couple of days, I'm like, that's, that's another serious challenge here. And again, not to alarm, you know, anybody, but let's be aware of this and try to get in front of it, because I think there are some real positive attributes to this plan, and we, you know, but we need to be realistic about the challenges, if we hope to kind of, you know, kind of kind of help it along.
Can I, can I ask, I know that we've, we've talked about, we've, we've described the requirement the requirement for forty three spots, because that's according to the code and the one fifty, you know, square feet per one space. But Tim makes the point that the space is being built out to accommodate twenty nine people, twenty nine people in seats the way that current, that the layout is currently designed. I'm interested to know, though, what is the capacity of the space, because I know that I have worked in places that were clearly originally designed or conceived of to be, maybe, you know, maybe for for ten people, but over time, you know, there's always more work, and it's a, it's a lovely problem to have, but you end up in some cases, you end up adding more employees to a space, and so I'm interested to know what the capacity of the of this space is.
It's a good question, I I think I do a lot of work in New York City as well, so typically, the the minimum is a hundred square feet per person. It's sort of, sort of a building occupancy for commercial, so if we have I mean, I I think, but that would be very dense. You know, I I, one thing, I I do want to point out is, sorry, the owner actually was been trying to get in the call and gotten bounced out, but he did want me to bring up that, actually, with the way that this organization works, and the fact that they're very digitally savvy, is that people will actually only really be in the office two or three days a week, so they will not be in all at one time, so the twenty nine people, he does not expect to be in all at one time, so they would be in two or three days a week. So he just wanted me to make, to bring that to your attention.
Ask also, it's a thought on the on the side, is it just keep the the village parking thing, the number on the on the side for the time being, is it possible to consider some kind of link or cooperation or something with the train station parking? Well, it's pretty full, but it's definitely not as full as Main Street, so is there anything that you can present to the village board, not the planning board, the village board to say, and maybe some of the employees can can, if they drive in, can park at the train station instead of on the street or something, this is just, this is something on the side, but what I'm trying to say is, I agree with the first lady who had the comment, you know, forty three parking, the whole Main Street doesn't have that many, so just to give the village some more things to to think about, or to, at least to coordinate some of the efforts, so maybe the using of the train station would help a little bit, I I don't know if it would be helpful or not, however, it's just another thought.
Yeah, and to be clear, that would be a conversation with the village board, because obviously, the planning board doesn't have that sort of discretion.
Yeah, exactly, but.
Nor do, nor could we bind, you know, Metro North to have the parking spaces available, or obviously, parking spaces that you'd be required to pay for.
Yeah.
Could I ask again what the capacity of the space is, please?
Well, he said it's a six thousand square foot space, that if you do a hundred, if you do a hun-
Six thousand, okay.
No, 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 so that, so Tim, the the dense number that you didn't want to say, I think, is sixty?
Yeah, I mean, I guess that's based on New York City code.
Yeah, yeah.
But, you know, you wouldn't put, you couldn't put that many people in there.
Understood, understood.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's that's undersized, and can I ask, just to confirm that the the use change here is is changing this from retail to office?
So it it's changing from retail to retail and office, and what's interesting is if we were changing from office to retail, it would still be the same amount of parking spaces that are required.
That's, that's correct, the turnover would be assumed to be different for retail.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, the short, the short trip parking, and again, we, you know, we can't kind of ignore the elephant in the room, which there is a four hour time limit on parking on Main Street.
May I, may I ask, may I mention, ask a question about the food service? Will there be people cooking, or will be people bringing in food?
So they don't have food service, they have, like, most offices do have a small pantry, so people can heat up stuff, but I think that the attractive thing on being on Main Street is that people can walk and eat in the different shops that are along Main Street, and that's that's part of the desirability of being here. So I think that that's really just a really a coffee station and water, but they, you know, people would like to go out and stretch their legs and and walk down Main Street.
Thank, thank you.
Right, do we have any other comment from the public?
Hi, folks, I live on Five Railroad Avenue, right there at the end of Depot Square, and, you know.
I'm sorry, can we get your, can we get your full name, we just have a.
Oh, Patrick Beesman.
Great, thank you, Pat.
Sorry, technical difficulties, and we've, we've lived here on Five Railroad for about five to six years now, and we have to say that it's not just the weekends that are busy any longer, you know, it usually, for us, even at this kind of pinching point here, it's Thursday to Monday. You know, and, you know, we're we're fortunate enough that we have one of the few parking spaces, if you want to call it, in the village, but it's pretty consistently blocked by visitors. And that's mostly our concern is that, you know, even if, you know, half of the proposed twenty nine people are showing up on any given day of the week, that just, it just puts more stress on our infrastructure here, because we're still kind of a you know, our roads were designed literally for, you know, a horse and buggy, so you know, I don't know what the solution is, I just want to raise it as, really, I mean, it's it's a real concern of ours. You know, just kind of the impact that this is going to have on on this part of Main Street, and then what ripples, you know, further upwards, because you know, between delivery trucks and and more, more cars and more customers showing up at the depot, it's, it's just gonna, at some point, become compounded, so, yeah, this is, again, just a general concern that hopefully, you can have some sort of positive resolution.
Okay, thank you for your comment, Pat.
Ethan, Tim?
Sorry if I had one more question, which is, maybe you can tell me, just to ask you off out of this in this meeting, because I was curious, when you were saying that because I know this was the retail establishment for a long time, the assumption being that that if, you know, the parking calcs were accurate, that the the load on the village was comparable, that the reason that that the waivers required is due to the change of use. But so I'm assuming that there, there's no additional parking needed for the retail portion that's not, not going through a change of use?
Well, the the parking is still calculated the same way, it's it's one per one fifty. Right, and so there are two separate retail, so you could certainly say if they're attracting different customers that are making a single trip, that there's more impact, right? But we don't, we don't really need to have to kind of go that far and figure it out, because the code just basically says it's one per one fifty.
Even if there's no change of use at the retail?
Well, it it is, it it's, the the site is being reconfigured, and it's going to need a new site plan. So the ones in the front would then be subject to the current code, whenever you, you know, it's kind of like, it's called you touch it, you own it, right, so if you if you go to modify your, you know, your, you know, your front porch, and then you're going to need a variance, so you're going to So you're going to need whatever to bring it up to the then current code. So since we're doing a new site plan, we'll look at the site plan. What was added in two thousand and ten was these, you know, payment in lieu of parking waivers, right? It was a way for existing commercial spaces to actually process a change of use. That was somewhat reality based. Prior to that, what was happening is people would go get, you know, a lease to go park some, you know, cars, you know, a block or two away at somebody's driveway. And it wasn't really reality based, that wasn't even really happening. And it, it's not a great solution because it's, it's not really enforceable and it's not really sustainable, right? The property that you got the lease from could, you know, could, you know, could sell or. So anyway, in two thousand and ten, the, you know, the village board at that time, you know, came up with these parking waivers. So since this is now an application for a site plan approval of two new, two new retail spaces, it's not one retail space. As well as the addition of an office, it is, it's, you know, we, it would need to comply to the current code, right? Which now has the payment in lieu of parking.
Okay.
Hopefully that's helpful. It's a little kind of inside baseball, but it's the. Yeah, and the retail, look, it, it, it is, it's interesting, right? Or, or troubling, depending on which side of the argument on that. The, the code appears to say the impacts of retail and office are the same, right? In my opinion.
There's no valid argument that, that, that the existing retail then converting to new retail that isn't adding impact. Isn't creating an additional impact?
You know, I mean, the way our code, like I said, our code, you know, it's, it's a much smaller retail space, right? It's a fraction of the other one. The, the additional impact is would likely, you know, i- is more obviously the office space, right? Because with retail, you have some shared trip parking and it's typically short trip. But with, you know, coming to work in an office, whether or not it's a third of the office at the time, it's typically a workday. Right, and so retail, i- it seems to me, my opinion, this is not the board's opinion, that it's an, it would be an unintended legislative consequence. That, that these things would be used for office be, be, but because for the fact that we've always had a parking restriction of time limits on Main Street. Right, so there's a, there's a, there's challenges here and hopefully challenges that we can all meet, right? It will require the village board, we, this board will need to confer with the village board. And figure that out. The retail's really straightforward, but yeah, I don't know. I mean, if you're, look, I mean, if you have two, two retail spaces that are in. If you have two retail spaces that are doing something entirely different, it's likely that you might have different customers, right? So.
Yeah, I would put to the, just for the public comment that I don't think that the retail that's converting to retail should. Require the additional parking. I may have no ground to stand on, but that's what I think.
Okay.
So anyway, thanks.
Thanks for your comment. Anybody that hasn't spoken, do we have any other buddy, public comment, Jeff? Patricia Damato?
Yep.
Go ahead.
Hi, this is Patty Damato. I live at thirteen Stone Street, the corner of Stone Street and Railroad Avenue. And I too have parking concerns. As Patrick said, it's not just the weekends. I watch the people from Houlihan Lawrence. From Poor George. From the Cold Spring General Store. The Foundry Cafe. Driving around and around looking for parking spaces because there aren't enough during the week as well as on the weekend. And I think that people who are used to working in Fish Gill. Are also used to driving to work. And I think that, you know, could be their comfort level. So it would be wonderful if they took the train. I don't think we can assume that that's going to be the case. And I think that's, you know, it's, it's wonderful to have a building used. But I'm also concerned about, I missed the first part of the description of this project. But I'm also concerned about. What used to be the dress factory, the Garofy property across from the depot restaurant. What's going in there and how that also might affect parking in the area? Thanks.
Thank you. The planning board hasn't seen anything for that property, just so you know, the Garofy property till dress factory?
Yeah, I didn't expect that, but it's just, you know, something I think we need to consider. And I also noticed the building that's up from the subway. No longer has a for rent or whatever sign on, on there. And, you know, that might be coming down the pike as well.
Oh, the Tyvek building, the yellow building?
Yeah, I think it was owned by the Nairns at one point and then Dean Natales, yeah.
Okay, great, thanks for your comment.
Thank you.
I don't see anybody else with their hand up. Jeff, you?
No.
I have a question just for the board. And this is just, I'm just thinking about the, comparing the requirements of the code to how people actually implement. Their plans, how plans change, how businesses grow. If I see here that, you know, right now, as this is illustrated. There are sixty seven seats on this, actually including the phone booth. There were seventy two seats if every single space is occupied. And I know that's not currently the, the intention of the, of the business to, to be filling this with seventy two people. But I'm interested about the parking, about parking. If, if the. If the use of the space exceeds parking. That isn't something that's. That isn't something that codes, the code speaks to, right? That the parking, the parking requirements speak to, like, it's just that you've got this. Maximum requirement or the minimum requirement or the only requirement under the code. Is to have, is to demonstrate these forty three parking spaces. In, for this, this building, regardless of how many people go into the building, correct?
Is your, is your question one around as far as changes after the approval or?
Yeah, I guess I'm, because, you know, we, what we see here is we see a, I mean, our, the, our site plan approval doesn't go to. How, how they may be running their business, right? I mean, if, if in, if in time, two more, two more workstations need to be added. Is the applicant obliged to come back to us?
I- in my opinion, no, it would be up to code, it would be up to code enforcement, who would look at, you know. You know, would look at occupancy, there's got to be an occupancy limit on the space.
Well, right.
Physical for fire and that's probably, it, it, you know, we would, we would look at it if there were a change of use. If it were to stay in office and they want to reconfigure their furniture plan.
Right.
You know, they probably wouldn't even really need to involve if, if it is just installed furniture.
Right, because it's a scale, scalable to the maximum capacity, right? So, so if, so I'm just, I, I'm just thinking, I, I just wanted to sort of confirm for myself that there is a disconnection between. This, the, the required parking that we're discussing and we're contemplating in this application. And the, and the maximum usage of the, of the space, right? Those aren't, they're not directly connected. Right?
Well, they're not anticipated, right? I mean, they're not, it's not, it's not something that the planning board, planning board can't, planning board is, is a, is a moment in time, right? The approval is, you know.
Right, right.
So yes, if things change over time, then no, the planning board would, would typically only be involved. Would only be involved rather on a referral from the building, from the code enforcement officer to say that there's something that triggers. Planning board review.
Right.
So no, it's, our approval would be on a date and time certain that we, you know, that, that, you know, you all approve me to. Stamp and sign the drawings, right? That's it. Is that helpful?
Yeah, it is, thank you.
Yeah.
I just say one, one last thing or sorry. I, I just don't know if it, it got lost, but I, the, the owner was trying to get into the, into the meeting but couldn't. But he did want me to emphasize that actually the people will only be coming in two to three days a week, not the full five days a week.
Jeff, what was, can you, can you tell me what he's identified as his computer? I mean, Jeff, can you see him in the?
Well, I think he's on, I think he's identified as James.
Oh, James, okay, okay, sorry, he was trying to get in before and.
No, no, there is, James is in the room.
Okay.
His, his mic is muted. James, did you want to speak? Just unmuted.
Yep, yep, just took me a while to figure that out. I'm caught in this rainstorm, so I don't know if, if it's audible or not.
No, you're actually quite, you're actually quite clear. Thanks for, thanks for joining.
Oh yeah, thanks for having me, I appreciate it. No, I, I was asked to join, I wanted to join, wanted to share excitement about bringing some more business into the town. And. I'm here if there's any questions directly to me. Of course, Tim is architect and helping to navigate and explain in the way that he can through all of the various rules that the procedures have with us. But I do believe that, you know, bringing in these knowledge workers during the week. Won't have that impact in the way that we might all fear. The world's changed, people aren't coming in five days a week. Indeed, through surveying of the, the, the team at my company, they really are comfortable and like. The ability to have the flexibility and that continued work-life balance. So the objective was to have a place for the folks that are in Putnam and Duchess to come together as a team. During certain periods and not all teams at the same time. So it could even be a little bit lighter than the numbers that we've been talking about. But I do want to acknowledge a lot of the comments around, but what happens in the future? And I, I do understand that and I think it makes a lot of sense. But what I can say at this moment in time and the vision for this is to bring in this team so that they have a place in a great community. Do the work they're looking to do and enjoy, you know, all the benefits of Cold Spring. Walk around, have coffees. Have lunch, breakfast, what have you. And then there's nine thirty to five, not there during the weekends and of course, not during the evenings. So I'll just pause with that and. See if anyone has any questions directly from me, happy to share.
That, yeah, that's very helpful. And James, I think that's why it's important that, you know, that you get on the agenda with the village board. To kind of talk to them to say, you know, obviously you, you, you've been listening to the challenges that we have as a planning board to process the application. So things like you're saying, which are that, you know, you have a, you have a maximum capacity of seating, you know, for, for, you know, for hoteling desks at like twenty nine. But you expect like a third capacity. And so there needs to be some kind of creative thinking going on here to say, how do we make this work? I think that's, I personally, and, and, you know, in my role here professionally, believe that's, that's a worth, a very worthwhile effort. But nonetheless, it's an effort that has to happen, right? Because, you know, we are, we are bound by the code, right? And so the, you know, the code says, you know, we, you know, we measure the four corners as, as, as Tim has and come up with these parking. You can add some color as to what the actual impacts will be. And then the village board in their, in their ability as the, you know, the executive and the legislative arm can kind of say. Here's some potential solutions, right?
Right, it's, it's a, it's a concert, it's a work together. It's our village, I've been here fifteen years, not living in the village, but in Phillips Town in the area. And I have a vested interest in helping the, the village, you know, continue on as its. Character today and beyond. Frankly, not looking to make it look overgrown. There's some areas of the Hudson Valley that I don't find as positive with their changes and not looking to have that repeat. So it's a balance. I'm trying to work with all the neighbors that are on this call and the ones that are really passionate and have the comments that they said are fantastic. And at the end of this, if we come up with a solution that works for everybody, that's fantastic. If we don't and we can't, then it wasn't meant to be, I get it. But it needs to be balanced and everyone wins in this approach. So that's the position that I have and how I'm trying to work with the board. And of course, more importantly, the community that. Is impacted and those that are on this call.
Great, great. And the, and obviously the folks you have on the village board are the elected representatives of the community. So they're, you know, they're, they're a good start to kind of talk about what your vision is and what your use is. And if there's a creative way to, to make this all work, right?
I appreciate that, thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, any other public comment?
I don't see any.
Okay, any board discussion? No, okay, I, I, I think that we have to, I think it is best that we keep the public hearing open and keep the public comment period open. I think the village, I think we need to confer with the village board, we need to get on their schedule. And I think we should continue the public hearing. I don't know if we're going to have enough time to do it at the next meeting because I think we need to get in front of the village board. And the village board needs to kind of to, we need to talk to them about how this, how this could all work, right? How does the members feel about that?
I, I agree. I'm interested to know when, when, when we can connect with the village attorney about this.
Probably at any time, I mean, obviously we'd have to do it in a, in a meeting, obviously we'd go and if it were an executive session, you know, or advice of council rather. That, you know, I guess you just turn the cameras off and turn the microphones off. And I'm not really sure how you do a advice of council session on a Zoom meeting, but we'll figure that out. But yeah, I mean, we could certainly confer with the village attorney. Because again, there's, you know, the, you know, it's interesting and, and, and Tim has touched on this wisely to just say, you know, the code kind of looks like. It, it, the, the impacts are equal, but it's, it is important to understand with code that the code that you read is not, is not always the full code. Right, there's the legislative intent of the code, there's the application of the code. And then there's all the supporting documentation, you know, when, when code is changed. And in this case, these, these were introduced by the mayor Gallagher back in two thousand and ten. And I researched all of this because we had somebody requesting parking waivers to expand residential, right? To subdivide a bunch of apartments and create many, many more apartments. In, in, actually in an adjacent building. And so it, it, you know, it, it stresses Main Street and it's also long-term parking, right? So again, when you read the, when, when I went through all the introduction of the, of the local law by the mayor. And then the review of the local law by the board, it's the standing board, it's the time to planning board, the zoning board. It, they were all clear in their comments that these were for the use of existing commercial uses, right? As a way to process changes of application. And that all, that all follows here because that's, it is a, it is a commercial change of use from one use to the other. The, the disconnect that we have or the challenge that we have is like I said, is the time limit parking on Main Street. And that I think it, it seems that all that was anticipated, and this is only my opinion, this is not a legal opinion. It seems that all that was anticipated in the code is, is short-term retail parking, right? And that it would be short trip. And that you could, you know, you, you could issue the waivers based upon that. Again, that is just my opinion in my review of the code and my understanding of the supporting documentation that introduced the code. When the local law was adopted back in two thousand and ten. So that's why, that, that's why I want this board to confer with the village board so we can kind of talk about what do we do? And to Stephanie's point, it can certainly include, you know, advice of council as to, you know, what are, what is, certainly what's his interpretation, right? What's his interpretation of what the payment in lieu of parking waiver really is? As well as the introductory documents. So the code, as you read it in the, you know, in the chapters, isn't always the full code. Because code is, you know, code is a living document. And like I said, it's the interpretation of that code, it's the past practice of applying that code. And then it's also all the supporting documentation when the code was introduced. Because no document is, is a hundred percent correct, right? And complete, it's something that needs to be looked at. So I just want to be clear that, you know, that there, those are the things that I think we need to discuss with the village board and the village attorney to kind of understand. What, what are, what are the options here and what are the next steps? I, I mean, I think it's, I think it's a, it is a. Putting aside, you know, the major challenges of parking. It, it is, it's great to see people invest in the community and believe in the community and, you know, and bring new life to these buildings. It's. You know, i- it's good to see the vibrancy. And so I think that, you know, I think that it is a worthwhile effort to say, you know, what, what is, what is the pathway to do this? If, if any, I don't, I don't know that, right? But I certainly think it's worth all of our effort to, you know, to kind of, to kind of, to figure out how this, how this might work. Taking into account, you know, the folks that, you know, that spoke tonight to say, we have a serious parking problem and it is not just Saturday and Sunday. Right, and that's my experience as well. I mean, I, I live in the village, you know, I mean, even just going down for a cup of coffee on a Tuesday can kind of be, I, I, I can't tell you the number of times I've just aborted. Right, where it's, you know, just turn around, keep driving. Because there's, so I think that, that, those are the kind of things that. Because there's, so I think that, that, those are the kind of things that we, that we have to look at. So.
Matt, I have a, I actually, I have a question I'd like to ask James. James, you said you've been, you've been in town. I guess you've lived in Phillips Town for fifteen years. Is that what you said?
Yeah, yeah. We moved to Garrison a bit a while, about two thousand and five.
Great. Okay, great. So you're with the village.
Sure, sure.
So in your mind, when you think about driving down Main Street and going to work at your new place of business, do you have a sense of where you and your, your team will park if they're not, if you're not going to be able to park, you know, right outside the door on Main Street?
Yeah.
Be able to, if you weren't able to park on Main Street, you know, below Fair Street, where might you park?
So the question is, how would the parking look if there wasn't parking available?
Yeah, or not, not if, yeah. If, because as you know, there are people who, other people live and work on Main Street. And you've heard, you've heard our, our neighbors who, who do live in the immediate vicinity, talk about the parking pressure and the congestion. And so this is congestion that they feel now, this is congestion that won't change when you go to work at, at Forty Main, right? So I'm wondering if, you know, you're thinking about this, like, you know, when the rubber meets the road here and, and you have your, you're having a team meeting or, you know, everybody's coming in. Or even if fifteen people were, were driving in to meet, what does that look like to you?
Yeah, I mean, we've, we've thought about it a lot. I mean, there's a, there's a vested interest in this group of trying to do better with the world. So a lot of them look at the location as a real positive, to be able to park in public transport and take train down. So as I mentioned, there's a pretty good concentration of that live-in beacon already. And that would be one of the aims to help incentivize them to do that. Not a hard thing to do because they want to. So there is a little bit of pressure that can be taken off by just doing that, leveraging public parking that's already in, you know, existence and so to speak beacon. But also from the south. Yeah, exactly. Well, well.
Right.
Okay, I didn't say that right. Yeah, but yeah, that's right.
Yeah, we can arrange for you to park in Beacon, right? Yeah.
Well, they're using mass transportation, right?
Right, right.
I hope, I hope we're encouraging people to do. Also, people coming up from Westchester who are, you know, primarily oriented around Proton, doing that, just like they would be going into the city, but coming north instead. So, so that's a helpful way to take down some of the percentages. Of course, there are going to be people that want to park. And there are parking spots available. It's nine to five. I've not personally had anyone do any, any parking studies, but on the southern part of Main Street in the mornings, it's a, you know, there's availability there. That is definitely for sure.
When you, when you talk about incentivizing use of mass transit, is that, is that something that, is that something that you do now as, as a, as a, somebody who owns and runs a business? Or is that something that?
No, no, we, we're big into that. But, you know, we haven't approached this problem because, gosh, it feels like eighteen months. I almost feel like it's been two years since we've been in an office. So new times, new set of challenges. But the incentivizing of mass transit, although an idea and a notion that we want to do and support, hasn't really had, you know, the application like this. So one of the reasons that this location is so compelling is because you can literally walk off the train and you're right there at the office. So the ability to incentivize and actually have people take up on it is viable. And then the way that we're looking at incentivizing is paying for, for mass transit, paying for the parking pass.
I love that you said, I love that you said that. Thank you.
Great.
Yep.
So because that's how you incentivize, right? I mean, that's, okay, great.
Yeah.
And that's something that could be discussed with the village board and could be, you know, could be important.
Thank you. Thank you, James. Because I'm, yeah, I'm very interested. That's what I was interested in, in hearing.
I, I'd love to know that there's thirty parking spots in the MTA lot that don't get utilized because of commuter traffic drop-off or never were. And then we could just use that as a commuter lot, basically, and walk over. Wouldn't that be easy? I don't know if it'll work, but that would be, one of the ideas would be trying to take a look at.
So that, that would be a, that would be a conversation with the MTA, right? If you were.
Yeah, yeah, I guess. I mean, I don't know.
Or, or.
Or do we just buy parking spots?
Right. You'd have to get on the list and then.
Oh, is it, is it a crowded station? Okay, I didn't know that it had a.
It is. Well, I mean, COVID is, you know, everything's different in COVID, but it used to be that if you weren't there with the early trains, you could have trouble finding parking.
Ah, I see. Gotcha.
You know, and I would think by the time you guys came, since you're showing up at nine, nine thirty, all the commuters have gotten on a train to the city by that time. So they should be at maximum parking, I would think at that time. I would suspect maximum now after COVID, you know, is, or not after COVID, because it's not after yet, is, you know, is, I'm sure is very different. I haven't, I haven't actually, I haven't been to the, you know, I haven't been on the train for a very long time.
I have another, I have another question for James. I'm interested to know if you've, if you've made a point of driving around the village to take a look at where there is parking and where there is underutilized parking, because that's not, I mean, and, and when I say underutilized parking, I'm not, I'm not referring to Main Street. But there are, there is a lot of unused parking down on the Boulevard and on Kemble. And I'm interested to know if you're familiar with that area of the village?
I am, but I would need help to understand exactly what area you're talking about, because I don't want to misspeak and, and, you know, get it wrong. So I would need a little bit of help from whoever would like to help and look at unoccupied areas and see if that's something that we could, we could leverage.
And to be clear, it's not really something that we, that this board could do an approval based upon. So it's something that would, again, be part of a discussion with the, you know, with the village board. And as to some, you know, essentially, it's some sort of, you know, alternate plan relief from the code. It could be a combination of things, right?
Agreed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Does anybody on the board have any other questions? No? Do we, I don't know if, if continuing the public hearing in two weeks, I guess we can, we could do that. I, we just need to get in front of the village board before that time and have all. We need another meeting though, because we'd have to convene publicly. I think we'd have to set this out.
To do what? We?
To take action, to take any action, right? You know, the board can't assemble with the intention to take action unless it's, you know, in the public, right? Either like this or physically.
Can we keep the public hearing open and can we invite the village board to our meeting? Or should we?
Well, no, it's, no, it's fine. I mean, the, they're not, they're, they're two separate, two separate tracks. I mean, we can certainly go get information and be at the, at the village board publicly in their meeting. Or, yeah, I guess we could invite them to ours. It's probably more likely that we'd get on their agenda and talk to them at their meeting. So it seems like we'd have to continue the public hearing, not on the next meeting, but the following meeting. Does that make sense, the continuation?
Out to about, two of our meetings from now. Is that what you're saying?
Right. Not the next one in two weeks, but the next, but the one in four weeks.
The next one's actually in three weeks.
Three weeks.
October fourteenth. There are five Thursdays in September this year, this month, so.
Oh, okay.
Super. So, so the fourteenth is the next meeting. The meeting after that would be the twenty-eighth.
Correct.
So I think we need the fourteenth to reconvene and whether or not there's an advice of council session or whatever. And then the twenty-first to continue the public, the twenty-eighth, I'm sorry, to continue the public hearing. Does that make sense?
Matty, forgive me. I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm looking at a calendar now and I just want to be clear about what, what our expectations here are. Are we, are we planning to, are we going to ask to be on the village board's agenda on Tuesday, the twenty-eighth?
Well, we're, we're going to ask. I don't know. That's my point is I don't know how quickly we're going to get on or, or if John is available. You know, or, or if, or if we need different counsel. So I'm not sure. But those things are going to take a little bit of time. That's why I'm saying, I think, to just continue the public hearing on the fourteenth and announce that right now.
Okay.
And I'm not sure if we can commit, I'm not sure if we can keep that commitment, which we should not do for a public hearing.
So I guess between, between now and the fourteenth, there are three Tuesdays. So by my view, we have three opportunities to meet with the village board and does that make sense? Is that?
Yeah. October fourth is probably the best possibility. The twenty-eighth, which is this Tuesday, is a public hearing for.
October fourth is a Monday, Jeff.
I'm sorry, the fifth.
Okay. The fifth. And then, I'm sorry, when was the public hearing that you said would not work?
The twenty-eighth.
Okay.
Which is this coming Tuesday's a public hearing. And this is short notice. So October fourth is probably the most realistic.
October fifth. Okay.
The twelfth, that is the monthly meeting.
Okay. And our next meeting is on the fourteenth. Okay.
Yeah.
Matty, do you think that if we meet with the village board on the fifth, on the fourteenth, we would be able to take any action or no?
Well, it's not about taking action. It's whether or not we're ready to meet.
Oh, that's just, that's our regularly scheduled meeting. That's right, the fourteenth.
Right. Well, the question is whether or not the village board, well, I don't imagine they're joining our meeting. I imagine we're joining their meeting, right? So we don't need to go for our regularly scheduled meeting. So that's fine. I'm not, are you saying that we're ready on the fourteenth? I'm not following.
Oh, I'm asking if we, if we meet with the village board either Tuesday, the fifth or Tuesday, the twelfth, if we can't get into the, would we be, would be, would we have information enough to take some kind of act, to discuss, close our public hearing and take some action on the fourteenth?
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't even wager a guess as to what we're doing with respect to the public hearing. We don't know the information that we're going to get.
Right, okay.
The question, the, the question, the question that's out here right now is, are we ready to reconvene with the applicant on the fourteenth? In my mind, right? Do we have enough information to reconvene with the applicant and continue the public hearing?
Got it. I was, I was hopeful, right? But I see what you're saying. We can't now.
Yeah, because we don't, yeah, we don't know what information we're going to get, right? So.
I think part of it too is that from my, the way I'm thinking about it is if we're talking to the village board, they're going to need time to absorb and consider the possibilities and the creative solutions, right? Is that part of the concern?
I, I agree. I just, I find it, I find it hard to believe that we're, we're going to have enough information to reconvene on the fourteenth, right? And then, and then talk about anything substantive, right? We could certainly reconvene and see if there's any new information. I don't imagine there's any new information on the applicant side, right? It would really be, you know, you know, unless, of course, the, unless, of course, James were to speak to the village board at that, you know, in, in tandem with that. And the village board were to, but again, I don't think the village board within a single meeting is going to take a position or offer any solutions until they've kind of considered things, right?
That makes sense. Thank you for indulging me and my calendar.
No, no, no. I mean, and I get that you're trying to move it forward. The question is what, you know, what we can do.
It sounds like at this point, the best we can do is try to get on the village board's agenda as soon as possible, expecting the fifth, because the clerk has, is attending our meeting. And then I guess we'll have to take it from there. And we'll keep the public hearing open. Is that?
Well, we should, no, we should, we need to set a date as to when we're going to reconvene, for when we're going to reconvene the public hearing. So the question is, is it the fourteenth or the twenty-eighth of October?
It's not the fourteenth.
That's, that's where, that's. Okay, the twenty-eighth. Do people agree that we'll be, I mean, I think that's, I think that's a reasonable amount of time. And I think, and I think that we, you know, that we owe it to, you know, move this as fast as possible. And I think that's about as fast as we can do it.
If, Matty, if we, if we are unable to get what we need by the twenty-eighth.
We still, we still have to hold the, we'll still, we'll still have to have a meeting and have, and continue the public hearing, possibly only to continue it again. But we do need to reconvene as a board and then say, you know, because right now, obviously, we would take a vote to say, we're, you know, we're going to reconvene and reopen the public hearing on, you know, and to that point, do I have a motion to reconvene the public hearing on October twenty-eighth for Forty Main Street?
So moved?
Okay, great. In a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, very good. All right. So we'll, we'll do that. And then, James, I don't know if you, if, if you want to meet with the village board independently, if you want to see what our information comes back, you can certainly proceed as you, as you think is best.
Will do. I'll take that guidance. I've, I've heard it and we'll continue on with it. So I appreciate, I appreciate it. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. So we can, we can move on to the next. Unless, Tim, do you have any other questions? You need anything from us or?
No, I think we're good. But if things can happen, we'll be available as early as you want us. So.
A good point. Yeah, we could certainly, you know, we could, we can certainly meet with you and workshop something if we need to on the fourteenth, right? Just wouldn't be a continuation of the public hearing.
Yeah, so I'll be available if you need me.
Okay. All right. Very good. Okay, great. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is, and sorry, that took so long. Obviously, we've got a lot of, a lot of detail to go over there. But that's, that's what we do. So we have Butterfield Realty, Ten Julie Lane in Cold Spring, New York, application for change of use for yet-to-be-built building number one from office to senior housing condominium. Obviously, it requires planning board review for the revision to the approved site plan. So we have Matt Moran from Butterfield Realty representing the, representing Butterfield Realty.
Hi, Matt. Can you hear me?
Yep, yep, we can hear you.
Good. So, hi, Matt. Hi, Steph. Yep, go ahead.
Go ahead. Let me know when you want us to put up a document.
Okay, yeah. The, so I know, obviously, Matt and Steph, I don't know the other board members, but I was thinking about it before I got on and I was looking at documents where this project kind of got started in two thousand and thirteen. So I know I'm a lot older now. So, so if you could put up, there's a C one oh one and it says as approved down in the corner. Yep, that's it. Yep. So, building one highlighted in yellow is the one remaining building yet to be built at the site. And the building as approved was a fifteen thousand square foot building. And it was approved for six thousand square feet retail on the ground level. And then the upper levels were nine thousand square feet of office on, you know, on the upper floors.
So it's two, it's two and a half stories?
Yes, two and a half. So it was six, six and three.
Okay, gotcha.
Six, six and three. The overall site plan, that was approved for fifty-five senior housing units and forty-nine ended up being built. Now, if you can go, Matt, to the next sheet, that's, it says proposed, it's the same sheet, C one oh one, approved. So we're proposing that it be a permitted use in building number one, that the remaining six senior housing units be housed on those upper floors. And the proposal would allow. and the proposal would allow for, um, well, we, the way it's working out schematically is the building actually would be reduced from fifteen thousand square feet to thirteen thousand eight hundred. The ground floor would remain retail, but it wouldn't be six thousand square feet anymore, it would be five thousand, it'd be about a thousand square foot reduction. And the nine thousand square feet of the upper floor office space would be replaced with the senior apartments. And then each dwelling unit we're proposing would have its own interior garage, it would have a, a normal garage, and then on the little space outside the garage, there would be an additional parking space. So if I did put a parking chart together, but basically, the overall parking and traffic demand already approved would be reduced by about twenty nine cars. So, um, you know, we hope that, you know, that this proposal would be possible and acceptable, and, you know, we could work, possibly work through it in a you know, it's, that it's something that we could work through in a fairly brief period of time, and, uh, you know, otherwise, of course, we could go, we could go back with, with what was approved, it's just we think this might be a better use for the property.
Okay. So, so you're gonna actually change the, the building entirely, right, the, the build out?
Yeah, we would, we'd have to go back to the HDRB, uh, because I don't think Ray, Ray Sullivan is still the architect. The shape is a bit different, although I think he could have it still generally look the same, but yes, it would have to go back to HDRB.
Matt, does that change in the design of the building account for your, your reduction of one thousand square feet? On the first floor, and so are we, like, the entire, the building just will be that much smaller on each floor, right?
It's, it's smaller, but those stalls that you see on the footprint, they're actually up at a higher elevation, so when you go around the back of the building, those are garages, which, by the way, are in the thirteen thousand eight hundred square feet. Those are up at the next level, so you would drive into the garages on the backside of the building, and then you, you would have, might have a step or so, and then you would go into your, into your apartment.
On what we're looking at here, the, um, so is this, it looks like there are four units, is this on the second floor?
Uh, there are, I think it's four and two, and I may have attached the floor plan.
Okay, so it's four and two, right, cuz you had said six, there's six units, got it, and the two, right, I'm clear on that, and so then, the, um, the parking, the little, it, to me, it looks like tandem parking, twelve tandem parking spots, but I'm sure that's not what you mean for it.
Yeah, yeah, one's in the garage, and then there would, yes, we would propose that there would be parking outside the garage, too.
Oh, okay, so there, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, great, I was reading it, I was reading it correctly.
Do we see four units or six on this thing, um, the yellow and the greenish?
Yes, so what we're seeing on that.
That seems to be four of them.
Right, don't forget, there's a, there's a half story.
Yeah, that's showing the, uh, second floor level, the first floor would be retail. There's a sheet in the package, I just had to pick kind of one of the floors to kind of best represent what.
So there are, there are four, I, I assume there are four on the second level and two on the half story.
Right, correct.
Okay, all right, so now we see, okay, this is, all right.
Okay, uh, the parking, it's interesting, um, the parking, I, I kinda feel like the, the prior planning board approved, I, I, I like that you're, that you're showing the tandem space, I, I would leave that in, but I, but I will say that the prior planning board approved fifty five units with one space, not something that I think is good planning. But nevertheless, that's what's, that's what's approved, so I would be, I, I think that has to be honored, if you, as long as you stay within the fifty five. If, if the building weren't changing, I would say we could, we could have the potential to waive the public hearing, right? But again, the public hearing's quick, I know, you, you guys, you know, you're, it's, it's just, it's just, it's just another meeting. Um, and in fact, unlike the one tonight, where, you know, typically at the public hearing, we're able to take action and close it out. As you can, I, I'm sure, you know, you, you sat through all the discussion on forty minutes, it's a very different very, lots of challenges to, you know, to the existing code, that this one doesn't have those, this is, is fairly straightforward. All the better, though, if you can provide the two parking spaces, I think that's probably more realistic considering that, you know, fifty five, I don't even know if that's even senior, um, I don't feel like a senior, so, uh, and I'm certainly not giving up my car anytime soon.
And you know, Matt, Matt did say that we've been, we've been looking at this for a long time, right? So we are older and we're all nearing fifty five.
Yeah, I would qualify now, I didn't qualify when we started, but.
There you go.
See?
See how that happened?
This is why we're still.
We'll, we'll, I'll look at that again, I'll discuss it with John, unfortunately, I wanted to have him here tonight, but he had a conflict, and so at, at the last minute, so I, I, I think there's still the potential to waive the public here, I mean, it, it's still a bill, but I, I think since the building is changing and the look and the feel of the building has changed, you know, we waived the hearing for the Mick, you know, the move of medical over to Leahy, right? Cuz it was just, you know, none of the buildings were changing, the, you know, the outside appearance wasn't changing. But again, don't, there's no reason to be concerned about a public hearing, it's literally just another meeting, we take the comment from the public. Obviously, the village, you know, the board, the board follows the code, you know, sometimes people like that, sometimes they don't. The quote, the code is, you know, the, you know, the, the code is already there, you're approved for fifty five units at, with one space, if you stay within the fifty five, I think that's what the, I think that's what the planning board, you know, will, you know, will, will honor. I just think that if the building is changing, it might be, it might make more sense just to do a public hearing, um, but I don't know that we have to, I think, I'd really just like to, just to confer with John. Um, and then I think the only other thing we'd need is just the short form EAF. It could probably be an unlisted action, you know, with a neg deck, or I think there's an argument to just say it's just a type two exempt, right? That it's not really, you know, this is certainly not, uh, a positive deck and going to an EIS, like, it's not at all like that. I, I think there's the argument, we just need advice of counsel to kind of say, could we, I, I kinda see this as potentially, uh, you know, either an unlisted, unlisted comes to mind first. But then just, all it is, is we just go through the, you know, the long form, right, and then just, and then just issue a deck, which I would suspect would be a neg deck. Right, because it's just, you know, it, it's, it's a building going in place of a building, um, so again, that's just paperwork, it's not, and not much paperwork, uh, and you're certainly familiar with filling those things out. Um, and half of them don't apply anyway. So it's pretty straightforward, I'll just need to talk to John about that. How does the board feel with respect to a public hearing? We, we can't set one tonight, anyway, we need a couple more things.
Are you asking whether we're interested in having, holding a public hearing?
The bill, the, for this kind of thing, the board has the, has the ability to waive a public hearing. We did that for Leahy because the uses were already approved on the site, and the least, and the same uses were just being swapped from one building to another. Right, so while we needed to update the parking table, you know, because Leahy wasn't counted in parking, there was really no, there's really no impacts for the public to look, you know, pine at, right? Because it's, it's basically just, it was shifting one to the other, right? This is slightly different because the building's being reconfigured and the HDRB is gonna have to get involved um, and, and look at the, you know, and look at the, you know, the, the architectural review of the building. So, um, and again, this is just to take a temperature right now, we don't need to make a decision. Or just, or let's not, let's not even, just, let's just think about whether or not you feel we need to do a public hearing. I would fill out the, the short form EAF. Uh, Matt, so we have that for the next, for the next meeting.
Okay.
Um, and then I'll speak to John, the parking table is there, I think that's fine, the site plan is fine. Um, I think at the next, at the next meeting, we should be able to, uh, determine that we have everything we need to set a public hearing. I mean, I wish we had been able to do that tonight, but without advice of counsel, a couple of questions open, specifically seeker, and, uh, and the fact that the, I didn't, it didn't, I didn't notice, to be honest, that the building was being reconstructed, I thought what I was looking at were parking spaces shown, but now I realize the building used to kind of be in the shape of a cross.
Yes.
Right, intentionally or otherwise. And now it's, it's very different, I just kind of thought I was, I thought I was kind of looking at a schematic showing me parking, so now that I understand what I'm looking at, and the building's gonna be redesigned, I think that's a little different, I don't feel all that strongly one way or the other.
Could, could we see the, could we see the approved once again?
Yeah, that's one page back.
I, I mean, I can't make it move, that's why I'm.
Yeah, I can't either.
So like I said, the building was, you know, kind of like a cross shape.
Yeah, can I ask, um, here, the, the parking is, the only change in the parking is, is, um, right, so, so the, the parking that we see on the west and the north of the building?
Yep.
That is still there with the cha, with the, the change that those that are adjacent to the building in this illustration are, are turning into those, um, three sets of ta, two tandem.
Right, right, or sorry, like a dedicated space in front of the garage.
Yeah, okay, um, right, okay, now.
Yeah, and you're gonna have to figure out your handicap parking, too.
Could I?
Is that what you're drawing? That's not what you're drawing.
No, that's showing the hydrant and the light pole, that's like, those are.
Yeah, so for the retail space, for the retail space, it looks like you're gonna have to figure out, you know, you have to do a site plan just as to where your handicap access is.
Yep.
Cuz obviously, they were in the back of the building, which are now taken over by the residential parking.
Right.
What is the retail space for, I'm sorry, uh, I'm, we moved into Cold Spring and two oh, well, no, actually, uh, thirteen, so, you know, we've been in the village for seven, eight years, so, you know, that's history, uh, a lot of things we don't know. But apparently, that complex was, uh, at least to us, was interesting, um, to, to know there were a lot involved. So i- if it's already approved, uh, you know, uh, I have nothing to say, and especially if the parking with a, inside the garage, which apparently, you know, we improve a little bit or, or increase parking without more parking space, it's, it's a, it's good, but, but, um, basically, what I'm saying is, uh, I have no objection to what is already approved in the past, uh, I just hope the, the new architect, whoever might be, will design something that's not so ugly. Pardon my language, but, uh, um, it, it really it, a, a lot of that complex.
We are, we are not an architecture review board, I would like to remind.
Yeah, but I, you know, I have nothing else to say, if it's.
Nor, nor will it influence, will it influence. And hopefully, you agree.
However, if, if it reduces a little space and so on, but you say retail space, I just, uh, I'm interested in knowing what, uh, what is it for? Retail spaces, what?
Yeah, I mean, I don't, he, he doesn't have any tenants yet for it.
Okay.
And again, we, we know, this board just approves the use, right?
Yes.
The actual tenant.
I have, I, we have nothing else to, to, I have nothing else to, to say, I'm just saying in, in general, if, you know, if the space is reduced a little bit and so on and so forth, the parking is not as bad, which is, you know, it's, it's all improved in some way, which is good, um, but I just hope it's not as ugly.
One of the things that, that is going away, um, that was approved and was anticipated in this building is the office space. And for that reason, and because this is a very prominent development in our very small village, those are two reasons I think it is worthwhile to have a public hearing. Not because I expect there to be a lot of a lot to be heard, but because I, I want to make sure that we're, we're being transparent and and there's nothing questioned about this.
I, I agree.
Just, I think these transitions are reasonable. And if, uh, you know, the, the site was already approved to accommodate the, um, the units. So it's not, you know, this isn't anything, this isn't doing, this isn't adding anything new or unanticipated, anything that wasn't approved, but it is removing a use that, you know? So, anyway, just, I, I'd like us to just be able to be sort of above reproach and and I, and I, I also, and per Matt, I agree that we can move it very quickly, we can schedule a date for the hearing, you can come in, we'll see you again, everything will go, you know?
Okay.
That, those, that's, those are my thoughts, I don't, I don't know if.
I agree.
Okay, yeah, so I think the next is just fill out the EAF, um, since you know that, you know, you can invest a little bit more than a highlighter and a red pen, have somebody show, you know, that, that, that there's a, you know, a positive response, show the, the new parking plan, cuz, right, you're gonna have to figure out where your handicap spaces go for the retail.
Yep.
And drop those things in, so you're gonna have to rework this. We don't need to see elevations, but obviously, you'll have to do elevations for the, you know, for the HDRB. I, I'm, I'm kind of in, in agreement, as I had already said from the beginning, you know, once I realized the building was being rebuilt and redesigned, that I think it, you know, I, I think the loss of office space, I mean, is, you know, I don't know that it's all that detrimental, but I do, but I do believe the public should just be able to kind of, uh, you know, give their opinion. And I think it's helpful, you, you know, to, especially, and again, to Stephanie's point, that it is, it's such a prominent, you know, uh, project, especially that building particularly, right? You know, that as you, it's kind of as you approach Cold Spring, that's kind of the, uh, that's kind of, that's the first thing you see, coming in off the curve.
Yeah, the, the building in the back is already extremely obvious, you know, when you say, whoa, it's, uh, yeah.
Gotcha, okay.
Thank you, Matt.
Yeah, yeah, so then I think an EAF. Do, you know, obviously, you've got the parking table, which is great, um, and then show us the, where, you're gonna get, you're gonna get closer to your final site plan, if you have the final site plan ready for the next meeting, we can then schedule the pub, I think we can certainly schedule the public hearing, we can then make a decision on, um, we can then make a decision on, um, on scheduling the public hearing, if we have all, if we have everything at the next meeting, we'll put you on the schedule for the next meeting to touch base, um, I don't know if you have enough time to do the parking plan, the final parking plan and all that, I know it's gonna take a little while, I would think, but.
Yeah, what would be the next, like, two target dates, you know, if?
October fourteenth and then the twenty eighth.
Ten, fourteen.
We meet on the fourteenth and the twenty eighth. And like I said, if you had everything, or if you wanna meet on the fourteenth and then do a touch base and say, okay, we, we still need this and this, we could still schedule the public hearing at that meeting and just say, okay, can you be ready in two weeks or four weeks, or cuz for, you know, a, a week or two before the hearing, we wanna make sure everything's filed with Jeff, so Jeff can show it to anybody that wants to look, and then people have it to comment on at the public hearing.
All right, sounds great, thank you for everybody's time.
Great, thank you so much, thanks, Matt, all right.
Thanks, good night.
Okay, so, uh, do we have any other public comment? I don't think we have any, not sure we even have any public left. I guess that's not, do we, uh, just with the board business, does any, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, second?
I can.
Two seconds, all in favor, I vote aye.
Aye.
All right, thanks, everybody, have a good night.
All right, take care, everybody.
Be well, yeah.